And...
I think that's what the game is playing.
He's living with me, isn't he?
No.
No, not anymore?
Nope.
So, we're...
I'm just hearing based on...
That's a bookworm.
Do you want to serve as interim?
I do not.
Okay.
So will you?
I will not.
I don't believe it.
I will, I will not. You, Virginia Mike, she's done it before.
Well, Mary's not here and we don't have a secretary, so I'm certainly using her on the chair.
I don't have the... I'm not really fast. My writing would never...
Okay, that's no problem, don't worry about it.
Who?
No, no, she has a class tonight.
How many?
Besides, she writes with excellent...
We don't have a quorum yet, do we? We still need two more.
We needed four out of seven for ZBA, which we have.
Okay, I thought, I thought for some reason we needed more.
We're a seven-member board. We need a quorum.
Yeah, we have more than, more than half.
Yeah. I'll just keep notes as we proceed.
Well, if, if we both keep notes, then...
We'll get it.
Want a sheet of paper?
Yeah.
I got it. Oh, you've got some paper there?
I got some.
I, I left without my briefcase.
I don't have enough... Oh, you've got a pad of paper?
Oh yeah, I always have that.
The people here, they wanted to do the...
Are you ready? Give me one second.
Yeah, there's a very interesting area, so we got four out of seven. Yeah.
We're here.
It's 22nd today.
22nd.
I don't know if that's...
If that's going somewhere. So, uh, 24th?
It looks like the 24th.
24th.
We call the meeting to order, please, with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We're here this evening for a zoning board of appeals meeting. To my understanding, the planning board, the joint meeting with the planning board, has been deferred to a time yet to be set. This meeting tonight is exclusively and solely related to the business of the zoning board of appeals of the town of Western regarding the property on 9323 Long Shore Road in the town of Western, owned by Mr. Beck. Firstly, can I have a motion to call the meeting to order?
It's a motion.
Second. Good evening. I'll remind the board and the members of our community that are here this evening, the request before the board is an area variance. There's four criteria in the zoning law for the town of Western for an area variance. Number one is that the request is of reasonable size or dimension. Number two, the request is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Number three, the request is not caused by simple inconvenience which can be obviated by another method. Fourth and lastly, the interests of justice will be served by allowing the variance. So, in, in light of that, I'll ask the board members to hear the case. Mr. Beck, would you like to come forward? And if you would, just for the record, once again, state your name and your address.
Uh, Peter C. Beck, uh, 9323 Long Shore Road.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Your appeal and request for variance this evening is with regards to?
Put the garage up.
Okay, you want to put a garage up?
Yep, I want it to be far enough off the road, from the center of the road to the garage. We haven't really got the room there. We got so many feet, you've got to be 100 feet off the road from the center of the road. And we haven't got that. We can go 50.
50 feet, I'm going to pass this around, there should have been copies, but I would like the board to at least have a opportunity to view the request. And any comments from any of the members of the board, questions for clarification?
Well, since I don't know the size of the property, um, it, it's... I've got to see this before I know what questions I'm going to ask.
Sir, your acreage that you have?
2.36 acres.
And your, your frontage for that is?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head. It's between 115 and 200.
Okay. Because the zoning requirement is 100 feet, and what is it about your property that prohibits?
It drops off in the back. It drops off down a little swamp. We just haven't got to, you'd have to bring in a lot of film to put something all toward the back of it.
The house is existing now?
Yes, it is, yes, the house is there.
And so the distance from the house to the proposed garage is how far?
Oh geez.
20 feet maybe.
What's that?
Maybe 25, 50 feet. It's the other side of the driveway.
The other side of the driveway, there's a garage next to where, no, it's on the dome.
Okay.
Next to the house.
For me, there isn't enough information here for this. I, I want to be able to reasonably decide if what you're asking is appropriate.
Yeah.
And, and I don't think, I don't think the sketch is enough. I think we need more information to be able to do it properly.
Okay.
And that, and I'm not saying that I would say no to a variance like this. Especially if there's a drop-off, we need to know how far that is. We, we need to have a better view, a view of what this is so that we can reasonably decide whether it's an appropriate variance.
Okay.
That's my opinion, I, I mean, all of you might have a different choice, but I wouldn't want to decide based upon this. I think it would be unfair to the board and it would be unfair to you.
If we go farther back?
Well, I think...
It's flat lands and it's all decent.
And, and that's, and that's a critical piece. But what I'm saying is, we need, we need dimensions, we need, we need measurements, we need to... You must have a property deed with a map somewhere. We need to use that. We, we need to be able to see that and then we can identify where that goes on the deed, on your map, so that, so that we can be fair to you and, and perhaps member whoever is the neighbor next door. I, I think it's only appropriate that, that we have enough information to fairly make a decision. And, and that's not, and I'm not saying that what you're asking for is inappropriate in any way. I mean, this type of, of a variance is very common. But I, I just don't have enough information to be able to, to make that decision.
I did do a site visit this afternoon. Walked out with Pete and he showed me what, what he had, where he had it, the lay of the land. He was asking originally for 60 feet and quite honestly, I would like to see it at 50 feet. So if the skew of the road versus how square the building and we just don't end up 2, 3 feet off and somebody making a problem with it. As far as the site visit, the lay of the land, the road sets up here, drops down to them and then does drop off out back to a swampy, swampy area. It drops off, there's, I'd say 15 to 18-foot drop before it levels off to the swamp. The, the area, as far as up and down the road, the next house down, which isn't even really in line of sight with them, they've got a garage closer than 50 feet to the road, so it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood.
There's only five houses on that road. That's it. They're all far apart.
But like I say, they are set up with a unique situation of, of having the drop-off, not just on the backside, but what would be the back of the garage is its sketch there. So they can't even go that way further.
Well, I can't tell any of those things from this. I, I'm sorry, but that, there's no, there's no dimensions here, there's, there's nothing here that tells me what you're saying exists. I, I, I can't approve any kind of a variance based upon what I have here.
Noted. Any other comments or questions from any of the other board members? Virginia?
Not at this time, no.
Not this time. Sir, I have a question. What is your capacity to go ahead and get those measurements and place that if you have it, an existing survey map or an existing plot plan map of your property? Is your capacity to, would you be able to get that done for us?
Oh yeah, well, I'm going to have to, there's no way around it. That's got to be done. That's it last week. Did we have a survey map of the house or something?
Yeah, I have a survey map at home, but I was not bringing it in.
I'm not saying it necessarily has to be a survey, but if you at least had a plot plan, but if you have a survey, better yet, it's, it carries more legality and you could make a copy of it and then draw in on the survey map.
Has the zoning officer looked at this with you?
Oh yeah.
He has?
We were all there, all three of us were there together.
Okay, so there, you have a builder involved?
I have a builder involved, yeah, like he lives right here in Western. I have a builder involved and I had that, that guy looked at it, the codes guy looked at it and he says everything, he bashed his stuff all, because it looks, everything looks like that.
If it's all, if, if you can, if, if you've gone to that extent to have it all measured out, that's the type of thing that we would want to see.
Okay. Okay, I'll just have to get ahold of my contractor, that's all. You know, get the dimensions, get everything down on a piece of paper for it. You want the dimensions of the garage?
Absolutely.
And, and so...
And the, and the, and the offsets and, and all of, all of the, I mean, we need to be able to make a reasonable assumption that you're going to put this in a spot that is going to be appropriate.
Okay.
And without, without seeing, without seeing that map, it's difficult.
Okay. Yep, I can do that. It's quite a ways, it's going to be quite a ways from the house, I didn't want it attached to the house anyway. Because we just built up there three years ago. We built the place up there.
Very good. Well, we certainly appreciate your willingness to comply with that request. Would one of the board members entertain a motion to table this, pending further information?
I would move that, that we table this.
Table this, pending further information and detail?
And when's the next time I can bring in information in here, when, the date?
As soon as you have it completed, sir, you can bring that information here and we'll schedule it as soon as we can.
Okay.
Well, it would be certainly appropriate to, whatever you have, bring it to the zoning officer to make sure that he sees everything and, and, because he may have questions, comments, ways to assist you in making sure that it's done the right way.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's what his, that's what his job...
Oh, I understand, he, he was there. It was two Saturdays ago, we looked at it and he said everything was fine. That's just what he told me to my face, so. I didn't have no papers to show him or nothing, but he took measurements and the contractor was there too. We all, all three of us were.
In order, in order for us to do the, do it properly, we need to be able to see the plan.
Yeah, okay, I understand what you're, what you're, you know. So I just, as soon as I get everything together, I can go ahead and submit it and he's going to let me know and we're going to do this again.
Bring it to the town clerk, and I do believe it would have to be re-advertised again.
Oh yeah.
And, and then we'll, we'll get it scheduled as, as soon as we can.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second to table this pending further information? Virginia, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
You, you said, you didn't figure Dan would be ready to build us for probably another month?
It'll be about a month roughly, he said. We're trying to get the ball rolling, be ready, so when he does pull in here, he can start doing stuff. But it'll be probably a month anyway. I'm guessing.
We're, we meet on the third Monday of the month.
Okay.
So...
Oh, we'll have to push it back into May, that's all.
But we've been meeting both meetings also, so we actually could do, we could do that during the regular planning board meeting, the moment before, if we have the info.
Yes, if we, if we have the information and if we can get it advertised in time to comply with...
You will have, you will have the information, I'll make a few full calls and we'll look what we got to haul, so.
Great, we certainly appreciate that.
Okay, well, thanks for your time and everything.
Well, you're very welcome, sir. If you come up against, well, I'll come up and help you measure it out.
Oh yeah, well, I already measured it out a couple times, and the contractor measured everything, but it, we'll get it all down on paper, the way it's supposed to be, so you can look at all, all the work and I'll measure how far from the house it's going to be. See, we got, there's an old existing garage there, it's right near the house, but we don't use that garage, because it's just about falling down.
It's an existing, it's an existing structure that are going to be removed?
It's going to be removed, it's been there for a long time. What time, when was that built, what year was that built? 88 that was built, that garage's just fallen down right now, so. We want to put something different up, but behind that garage, it drops right off to it, so. We decided to move this garage over a little bit, we didn't ground pool where this garage is going to go, but I had it all filled in last year, so.
We better make sure that's good and solid and filled in the top of it.
Let me tell you what, that's solid, you could, you could launch a missile off that if you wanted to. Believe me, that's solid. It's not going to sink in any, is what I'm saying. It was not right, because I was there today, but then we did it, so. Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Yep.
That, in essence, concludes the scheduled business of the ZBA. And anything with respect to the, the present business, we would open up for comments from any of the community members?
Would that plan be available to review?
I, I can't answer that. I don't think so.
I don't think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, it is, it is...
Why don't you get back to me?
Well, yeah, that would be most appropriate.
And then bring it in next time you meet, if, if it's something that we can review.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's the board's decision to review this. Whether it's made available to the public prior to or after the fact via a FOIL request is, is the question at hand, so the reviewers will simply be the, the board. However, in that public meeting in which there will be a decision, the information would be here and members of the community could comment, especially if they believe it affects them, so.
Good.
Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. I bought a house on 46 in 2005 and it was, it was renovated by a realtor group prior to my purchase. And I'm just wondering, because they did do a very shoddy job of the work and they hid a lot of the stuff that was really seriously wrong with the property. Would anybody in the village have had to do an inspection or put a permit up for them to do anything on a property that was being renovated to the extent that I think this property was?
Honestly, I can't comment on that because I don't know all of the specifics at, at this point.
The only thing specific is, it was a, it was a flipped house, okay? They flipped the house. They bought it in March of 2005 for 26.5 and they flipped it to be in July for 169. And then a week after I moved in, I was in a head-on collision and I was very ill for a year before I woke up out of the brain trauma to see what I actually bought. And, and the kitchen cabinets came off the wall and this and that. But what I'm wondering is, is if you have a, a house renovation that's a total renovation, electrical, plumbing, roofs, is there anything the village has to do to look at the property before a sale is made? Or is that just something that they get a permit, they do the work and then the next step is, is to sell? Because I don't know how it works, that's why I'm asking.
Unfortunately, without changing the footprint of the property itself, it's like buying a used car off a used car lot. By everywhere.
Right, okay, I'm just wondering if there's a process in the town?
The appropriate process that we would have been aware of, members of the board, would have been if somebody had applied for it to them.
Right, and that's what I'm wondering if even that happened, because when I... At the point where I was at the pre-agreement, all of a sudden, everybody was unavailable for me to get down in the basement to see the mechanical systems. And in, in nondisclosure, in the fact that the attic was infested with bats and they kept it cleared out, so I never knew, I was up there. And every time I go to see the house and I open that stairway up to the attic, because I was going to put a studio up there, I forget to close it and then they get angry, "Why didn't you close it?", they never said, "There's bats." So I'm, but I'm, and that doesn't matter, what I'm, my question is...
Ma'am, could I comment?
Yes, please.
Yeah, one zoning that, that I am aware of, if the house was unoccupied for 18 months or longer prior to, then there would be, need another occupancy permit, would need to be secured. So, without knowledge of the records or anything like that, we can't comment. But if indeed that was the case, if the house was not occupied for 18 months and, and whatever company or individuals did that, you know, the onus or the burden of compliance would have been upon them to, to comply, if indeed that was the fact.
Right, that's, I'm just trying to find out, you know, like, because of the situation we're all in with assessments and everything and everybody, you know, I, I got, I sent my paperwork in the garden, there's a reasonable difference in what they said and what they're going to say, but, but it made me think about the whole situation with that property and what happened inside that house as far as how they flipped that house and put a predatory loan against me and didn't really do the quality. If you were to see, it's very low budget quality.
Right, well, it, very likely, and I can't say for certain, but it may be a matter of private litigation where you...
Right, I understand that, but how would I find out if they even had those permits? That's, I guess, the question.
That would be the job of your counsel to do that?
Yeah.
And so, not, not, I got what you're saying, because I don't understand...
If you, if, if...
What you mean by that.
Whoever your lawyer would be.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, they would be doing research for you.
And did you have a lawyer representing you when you purchased the home?
I did not, because I was very naive in, in the, in the purchase, because my mother was back in Massachusetts dying and I needed to find a place to live that was quiet and she could die at peace. So I just bought the house, just like, I got to get a house. She was, there was a big situation back in Massachusetts and I just like, I went to a bunch of different houses, this house seemed suitable. The timeframe was getting smaller and smaller for me to decide. But at the end of the day, I just want to know if there was a process for that, as far as it goes, so.
They likely could have then, but that's what, what your lawyer would find out.
Okay, I just, that answers a lot for me, just from what you've said, the 18-month occupancy situation.
Absence, yeah.
Yes, and then I would have to have someone... Now, would I be able to find out if they were permits just from the village? If I came and looked at, if someone could look that up?
It's possible.
I do believe you could...
It's possible that, yeah.
So I could make a request to see if someone could find that for me?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's, I'm just curious to know...
Yeah, you'd have to supply the necessary information.
I have that, the block number in the building, I have all that. Okay, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, any other comments with respect to the business at hand this evening? No other comments, any other comments from the board? Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Virginia and Roger, thank you very much. A few comments from Chairman Doughty from the planning board?
No. Did you, I sent those emails out, I don't know if you had a chance to see them, they came through finally.
They did, but I didn't get a chance to.
No, that's fine, that's, as long as the formatting worked now that we can...
Yeah, they're in my inbox.
Yes, that's...
Just his inbox?
I sent it to everybody's...
Oh, because I haven't received any?
Yes, and it's going to, he's going to, he has, he has his only word, emails, so.
I'll get it to you, Roger.
Phil, no, he has a file.
You got it to Phil.
You should see it in yours.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for not believing that question.
Certainly.
I've had that question in my head for a long time, but really, I, I have to be quite honest. I've been in the village for 17 years and I thought the town hall was just a place to do a traffic ticket. I honestly didn't know that we had a board, and I know that sounds ignorant and I don't deny my ignorance. I didn't know we had a board, I didn't know we had councilmen, because my confusion with the hamlets in the villages, so it's Western, Westernville, Northwestern, Frenchville, that doesn't exist, I mean, so, and I, so I did a traffic ticket in the building one time and I thought, okay, this is just a offshoot of the Rome court system. I didn't know, I found out we had that when the assessments came. So that, so I just want you to know, I, I just, I've had some questions in my head for a while.
And we're sorry for the difficulties you had.
I appreciate that, thank you so much. Thanks for the answers.
You're welcome.
And I can get the FOIL request from the clerk.
Tom Clark, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, she's nice, I sat with her Saturday.
She's nice.
Thank you.
She'll take care of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I was thinking the same thing.
Oh, it's Brian Jeffries. I was not going to hit. There was really nothing. Absolutely nothing.
Not that I know of anyways. Caveat, that's all.
They absolutely knew what they had to do. Say, we were the law of life. When Donna and I bought the property, where the whole barns was, that was headed to Brian Jeffries. We got it before that.
Thank you, Roger, for the detailed request, which I thought was very reasonable.
I, I don't understand how it could be done any other way.
Go to the old oak tree, you take three big paces and you're ready to run.
Now you're looking at my deed.
You're severe language.
Yeah.
Where did the anger at go? The old oak tree's gone.
The other side of the point is, though, is these property visits should almost be required if there aren't two numbers.
Well, that's, and, and I, I think I mentioned that to you the last meeting, that if you're going to, if, if there's a variance request, we ought to have a couple of people look at it. But it still has to be backed up with something.
I'm curious where you are.
It's not, I mean, a reasonable, a reasonable sketch is not unreasonable.
A plot plan.
A plot plan, certainly, I mean, with, with some measurements. I mean, if, if, if the variance is based upon measurements, then the plan ought to have some measurements.
If I wasn't for time, cost, and I actually got to look at it, I would have took it.
I know, I know.
It was this afternoon after work.
But again, I, I guess that's not my point. My point is, is if somebody is requesting a variance, they ought to put the time in to get it done, to do it.
Well, all right, now this is where this has got to go. When Scott Bush shows up and tells them what they got to do and everything else, this is something that has to be explained.
Oh yeah, and, and I, and I have said that many times. If, if Scott is doing the best, really, I am just suggesting, he is telling them what they need. This is okay.
You know, a short little piece of paper, check off all the things and he's like this. You know, what, what he's measured on, he said he measured it. He thought that, okay, maybe...
Hey, how are you? How you doing? What's going on? Nice to see you. Nice to see you. Just a quick question I had.
I know, but take it.
Any applications for, I hear it's pretty tight. Put the application in early, mid-March. But apparently there was a glitch in the paperwork and it never got on the agenda for tonight. Do you have any information on the...
If you're not in very late.
I'm just wondering, I mean, it's not going to be heard tonight, it sounds like, because it was just adjourned. Pardon me?
Pretty much comes down to the bottom line, Jeff, until you own the properties and have a full view of everything you're doing there, there's not a reasonable...
Just curious, the application was put in, I mean, I don't know what the glitch was, why, why it wasn't heard?
For you to put a whole barn on an unconforming lot, it doesn't have a primary structure, it's something that you...
Jeff, have you posted a document?
Oh, I own the property.
It's your property.
The one lot, but there was a second lot that made it an unconforming lot. Well, that's information we were given, you didn't own that yet, didn't have the lots combined as one.
Well, I like the hearing, I was just curious if, if it would be heard tonight, the application was put in, like... the application was put in like, mid, um, the communication was like mid, uh, to early March, was there a reason? 'Cause none of the neighbors were notified or anything, I had my application in a long time ago, so-
When did you say about March?
Yeah, uh, March fifteenth, I think, but I put my application with Scott and, uh-
And I would be up to the town clerk to forward it from there to the sheriffs. Uh, and to get Scott to make sure the appropriate, uh, time is not going to be heard.
I had a communication with Scott the whole time, okay, we're here for the twenty-fourth and-
I apologize, we're not there.
Yeah, um, uh, do you guys have any other, are you guys hearing any?
The zoning business is done.
Zoning business.
I think it was at seven thirty.
Seven.
Okay, he's in, Scott's at seven thirty?
If, if, if you're dealing, if you're dealing with, uh, a zoning issue or variance, you ought to talk to your, the codes enforcement officer and make sure that you have everything you need.
I did, I gave him a map and gave him all my plans.
I saw some of the stuff, the last meeting.
The last stuff we saw, you didn't have the deed to-
There was not enough there.
Have the property combined.
We couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't even think about doing anything on that.
For a hearing?
Yeah. We weren't sure if you owned the property or if you did.
Oh, no, I owned the property for a year, almost two years.
Yeah, well-
The original property, there was two parcels.
There were two parcels and-
They were total of three parcels.
Three, okay.
I guess, I guess this is the mix-up, guys, um, I put the application in a timely manner, we're supposed to have a hearing tonight, it never got on the agenda, none of the neighbors were notified, um, I'm on a very limited time schedule, 'cause I have a lot of other business in the town of Western, I've got a job next door to me for the Cook's House in my building, I got a job for the Freedens House on Elmer Hill Road, which we have permitted through the town of Western, I have my projects, plus I have a whole laundry list of other projects going on right now, um, I put the application in a timely manner, and for me not to even be heard, um, because I'm, I'm sure it'll pass no problem once it's heard, I hired representation for tonight, but I canceled my representation, 'cause I got notification this morning that it was canceled, or that I wasn't on the docket, um, so all I'm asking for is, I need to be heard, my summer's very busy and I cannot wait another month, can we arrange for a special hearing in the next two weeks? Two, two-
I'm just making a note.
Yeah, I'm looking for a special hearing, and if there's any, if there's any fees for the special hearing, I'd be more than happy to pay for the fees.
Can you move to Chielan?
Jeff Petrowski, um, and if there's, like I said, if there's any fees, or if, if we have to send out notifications to the neighbors, I'd be happy to send out the notifications, I will actually certify them, pay for the certification, I mean, right now, I'm two weeks behind because of a-
What you're gonna submit, Jeff, is the same that you've already submitted?
Do you have that paperwork that I submitted?
It's probably the same.
Carl's got it, I'm sure.
Carl has it? I thought it was in-
I don't understand why the ball would get dropped, though, like, I mean, I took the time on a Saturday to meet with Scott, put the paperwork in, talk to Mr. Central-
Look, I tried to explain it to you, Jeff, there's three separately deeded properties, none of them conforming.
But it still needs to be heard in front of the board, I mean, it-
Not until those three properties are as one, as you say they're gonna be.
It's, it needs to be heard in front of the board, I mean, I'm not gonna argue the case without the minutes being heard, without my representation.
I'm, I'm telling you what's your trouble.
Okay, and that's-
You know, I, I'm doing that for your benefit, so-
Mr. Spore, I understand what you're saying, but it needs to be heard in front of the board, uh, because there's no other, it needs to be heard in front of the board, and we had a meeting scheduled for tonight, and I got confer, uh, confirmation of this meeting weeks in advance, I hired counsel for tonight, we were, we were to have the meeting, um, and it just didn't happen, so, I'm, I'm requesting a special meeting, uh, two Tues, or, two Tuesdays, uh, no, the next meeting would be two Mondays from night if we had a special hearing, I can get the paperwork to all the neighbors, um, I could, I could address the envelopes.
The two Mondays from tonight is a little work, it's the town board meeting.
We could do another night, we could do a Tuesday.
We're, we're gonna have to pick a, uh, some, a night that isn't already on the docket.
I'm all about business, Mr. Spore, you know that, I, I mean, it was, it, it was, my paperwork was in on time, it should've been heard tonight, I'm just asking that it's heard, in, in, in a timely manner, I've got a lot of other business in the town of Western, I really cannot wait another month for this to be heard, and I understand what you're saying, you don't understand all the facts in this, the fact, the fact of the matter is, it is gonna, it is conforming lots, and I'm not gonna, I'm just, the minutes aren't, gonna be heard tonight, so I'm not gonna argue my case tonight, it's a waste of everybody's time, but, I mean, I would like a special request for a special hearing-
Sure.
-sooner than next month.
Although it's next month, well, we have to do ten, ten days for the advertising, so-
Right, so that wouldn't be-
And I could stuff envelopes, I'll pay for certified mail, whatever it takes.
That's not the stuff that we need you to do, what we need you to do is to have a, a complete plan that we can look at and rationally decide on.
And I, and I-
And, and, and three-
I submitted a complete plan.
No, you did not. No, you did not.
If we could pull that up-
We saw that, we saw it in complete plan.
If we could pull that up, Scott agreed it was a complete plan, he signed it, I signed it, it's solid, I had a survey from Jeff Moore, everything documented, it's a complete-
I didn't see a survey plan.
Well, I, I assure you folks, and if this wasn't canceled right, Jeff would be walking in with the plans in his hand, that's what he does best, it's all taken care of, my eyes are done, my t's are crossed, I really don't wanna lose another four weeks on this.
Did we see a survey plan?
Alls I saw was, uh-
I saw a sketch.
I saw a sketch with the property lines of three different properties, the barn was shown on one property that was a non-conforming lot-
Yep.
-and didn't have a primary structure to go with it.
That's why we're at the zoning board meeting.
Exactly.
Uh, but we should be heard, and I don't feel as though, you know, I'm getting the courtesy of being heard tonight, and I put the application in a very timely manner, you know, summer's my busy month, you know, we have two businesses.
We'll do our, we'll do our best to, uh, to expedite this, but I would suggest, if you put that, if you have that email that where you sent it in, doesn't work, send it into the town board again.
The email that I sent it in-
Did you email or bring it in?
No, I, I met with Scott on Saturday, the sixteenth, I think, of, of, of March, right, before, I just made the deadline to make this meeting.
Okay.
So I had it in on time, um, but, Mr. Spore, to make the decision that it's non-conforming without hearing the, I mean, I mean, that's why we come to the, that's why we come to the zoning board meeting.
I mean, this is insane.
Is, is to make these decisions.
I, I wish Carl was here, 'cause Carl was the one that dropped the hammer on it.
Well, it was, it, don't blame just Carl, because I, I mean, it was pretty unanimous that you had three non-conforming lots that were not actually pieced into one, and so therefore it would be very difficult to-
A letter of correspondence to me saying, hey, look, you know, from what I understand, from-
This is what I'm getting at, the, the communication dropped somewhere in the middle, and without Carl being here, that kind of is, I don't know what he did or didn't, so for me to sit here and say he did send, I can't do that.
I'm just looking for a meeting, that's all I'm looking for, and I assure you, once we have the meeting, everything's conforming, everything is stamped, eyes are dotted, t's are crossed, um, Jeff Moore is very intelligent man.
Sure.
He's, he knows the deeds, he knows the, uh, the boundaries, everything is conforming, I just don't wanna lose another month on this project, 'cause summer's my busy season.
Understood.
And, uh, you know, I really need to get this rock and roll, um, can we-
How do I do that?
How do we go about getting an application for a special hearing, that's what I'm looking for, and is there a fee for it?
There isn't one.
There isn't one.
There isn't an application for that, what you're requesting.
We can, we can agree and set a schedule, uh, set a separate meeting for your, specifically for your-
Is that something we can do tonight, so I can put down the schedule and, and-
Not, not until, not until Carl, that, would, would actually be the one that would do that, and he is not here tonight.
We will also absent our secretary.
We're absent, we're absent the secretary and we're absent our, our Joe, so-
She would post the public notice.
She would post the notice.
And I appreciate that very, very much, um, how do we go about doing that, so we could secure a possible special meeting?
We've just said it like, four, four or five times, saying it more times isn't gonna help, we, we told you, we're gonna try and do that, we, we will try and do that, but you have to make sure that when it is set, that you come with real plans and a real everything.
I had all coming tonight, sir, before my, the codes, Mr. Bush, that I wasn't on the docket.
Yeah.
So I had all that scheduled for tonight, and if it was on the, I just don't wanna pay him to come to two meetings if this, if there isn't going to be one, so I guess I'm just looking for a, well, let's get-
We'll communicate with Carl and the town clerk.
And Scott.
And Scott, and an email, either this evening or first thing in the morning, to try to expedite this for you, um, if, if there's anything that was going on in person, it'd be nice if that was submitted in advance, uh, with, you have the application and with all the other plans that you were coming this evening, were they in what you submitted?
Uh, in my original?
Yes.
They, they were submitted, absolutely. Um, Scott, I don't know if Scott's got any other, um, documentation, his survey, he knows more about boundaries and deeds and than I could ever possibly, that's why I acquired him or asked him to come here with me.
Right, okay, okay, so, in theory, we have it all.
Um, and whatever else Scott is gonna bring, sorry, excuse me, Jeff is gonna bring my stuff, yeah, um, is there somebody I can talk to? Either email-
You just talked to us.
Yeah.
Just to confirm and set up this-
Do you wanna write down your email and your phone?
Yeah, absolutely, Bill, thank you.
I might.
Yeah, I just don't wanna get pushed forward another month.
Well, apparently, the town clerk didn't get this info, so it went from, to Scott and didn't go any farther.
I regret that we didn't have everything.
It's no problem, I, I appreciate you helping me out and, and just hearing the email, I know we can't hear it tonight, but just-
It's over three hours.
It's over three hours, that, that should come from the position and emergency department, not from the paramedics, not from the, period, and, uh, that also shaped a lot of the town board decisions.
Scott's here, he's not here. That would be correct.
How are you tonight? Fair to Midland. At least in some water.
Awesome, that's what I am. Thank you so much, sir, I appreciate it very much, appreciate your time, just looking forward to seeing.
We'll, we'll get it in process for you.
Okay. Appreciate your time, guys.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you soon.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, I don't know if, you know, my son Zachary?
Hey, Zachary, how are ya? Nice to meet ya. Doing true as well as you.
Yeah. Buck Hill.
Oh, here, um, there, yeah, yeah.
No, that's a camp, uh, that's Carmichael, no, Buck Hill, growing up too, that we had all four.
Okay, yeah.
Just like you, this little-
Oh, okay, thanks. I love that, it was actually great.
I really appreciate your time, thanks, guys. Take care.
This was the property that we talked about the last time.
And he stood right there, and he heard us say that we could not go any further-
Yeah, I, I thought-
With what he presented.
Right.
And Carl was, and married us.
So, we haven't, we haven't seen any plans.
No, well, we didn't have anything.
There was, there was nothing presented to us.
Correct.
And, and, and three non-conforming parcels, if, if there was no proof that they were all owned, you couldn't combine them, so therefore, there's no way you could end up coming up with a zoning variance to do any building, I mean, you'd be great in every of the, one of the zoning laws, knowing, right, three non-conforming parcels are just that end, I mean, they, until they're combined, you still have three non-conforming parcels, and, and none of that, none of which you can build on.
Correct, yeah.
So, so if he owns all three, if, if he owns all three, if he owns all three, they have to be joined, they have to be joined, before, in order to, in order to put plans in place, in order to build, because until you join them into a lot, no, no, my point is, until you join them into a plot, they are non-conforming, and you can't go down, and so, the one, the one had existed, oh, once, once the three are joined, now they are conforming, and now you can do this-
I'm just unsure how-
It's nice, as simple as having just my girlfriend.
Of course, and that, I mean, it's, it's simple.
I mean, I didn't know they got on this board two months ago, but we're about this , we're in the right time.
If they would, it would have been simple, but it has been made complicated because sometimes there's still, there's still no proof that there is one owner, and it has to be proof of one owner in order to join parcels, you can't, we can't assume that they are all, and they'll have to approve, so that they can be joined, and once they're joined, then they, then you get that, that's really hard, that they had to join them. He doesn't, at the, at the last meeting, he did not own two.
Oh, okay.
And, and, and I've owned them for years.
I did give him the point that she was-
So, so, there isn't enough, there isn't enough info to be able, I mean, if, if, if he comes back, before the board again, with the same thing, it's gonna be the same thing again, it, it can't be any other way, you can't, you can't join parcels that are owned by one guy, it's, it can't do, it's not, it's not, it's not something that you can add a, a building prevent, there's no-
So, well, I don't wanna speculate, it's just, why do you not just take care of it?
Yeah, I mean, that's what-
There could be a lot of reasons.
We told them at the last meeting, we told them the things that needed to be accomplished.
Can't just turn on everything I've done, I mean, in light of what happened, I think they're going to, not if we can beat it as soon as possible.
Well, you know, a lot of these, you know, if you stand on the porch out there and yammer for twenty minutes, and everybody's like, we've done our business, let's go home, you know, twenty-three years, that's how it was done, you know, they walk in, okay, that's it, let's go home, you know, that's the way it was.
Well, gosh, for you guys, my name's Todd Keaton, I live on Elmer Hill Road, trying to get ahold of the town assessor, four, three to four phone calls, nobody calls me back, three emails, nobody, eight emails we had, I was told this was supposed to be a town thing for Texas, the assessor's not for Texas, and that's the day I was here. What, who? Somebody called me and told me that's the one.
This is, this is zoning board meeting.
When's the next meeting?
For the, you would have to go to the-
You do that for the town board meeting, that's what you do.
And, and with respect to your reevaluation and the assessment of your property, the pending assessment of your property, you could meet with him, I believe the town assessor is away at this point in time for a while, but you could try to meet with him as soon as he gets back, I'm sure he would respond to your emails, or come to the board, uh, the, the grievance day, uh, which is May-
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Just letting you know, I've already talked to a lawyer, okay, and I'm gonna petition everybody in the town, okay, just a very, I'm gonna go to the state legalization board on you guys, because getting a complaint from-
Well, it's out on us. Well, it's not on us.
Well, it's fine in either
Because I'm a, I'm a landowner too.
It's fine in either that it's not on you guys, okay? But, I mean, they told us to follow paperwork for garden, they haven't heard nothing from now yet, supposedly we're supposed to get a letter made first. Well, we're, you know, I don't understand the process, but this is a reevaluation that was made on Town Board level, and my evaluation went from six, or sixty-nine-one to two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, I have a problem.
You absolutely should be, I mean, you should have, you should be able to get an audience to talk about it, for sure.
Yes.
And, but, the zoning board isn't that audience.
I understand that, I understood that when I said, I don't know, you said
Before you actually had voted court, your first port of call would be to talk with the Town Assessor when he returns, the second port of call would be grievance day, and that's, that's a board of three. Be prepared, have all your
Bring all of your, all of your info to that, to that person's board.
All the info's right here, it's off your own website. I mean, they're not, they sign me, but they're comparing my house, I have a one bedroom, one bath, okay? Here's regards that they were comparing me to, every one of these is a two-bedroom, three-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath, two-and-a-half bath, so the square footage is, is way over nine. They're saying my square footage is one-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety or something like that, I was the one that put the siding on the house, it's twelve hundred square feet, I know for a fact, I put the siding on, that's what I ordered, twelve hundred square feet.
Put all your data together
Everything that is
Nice log of package With comparable
You won't be alone. I mean, you won't be alone, there will be others, there will be hundreds of other people there. Yeah, there won't be a lot of people.
The form for grievance has to be filled out four of the date of May twenty-four.
May twenty-four?
No, not on this date.
And submitted?
Yes, submitted.
I'm on twenty-four, it's right there.
On twenty-fourth or before the Steve, if you make it a major with Steve Hunter, you are allowed to drop off the form before that date. But if the form is not in, Steve
Why don't they automatically send the form, the grievance form that we sent to Gar? Same, same form, basically.
You're in the same hole that everybody else is
You know, because they're telling us, they're telling us, oh, we don't have to do it, you got it with Gar, now we went to Gar, and now we have to deal with the board.
I personally got my letter back from Gar, so you should, Gar sent out the letters last week.
So I didn't get a letter from Gar, yeah.
Maybe you should, you like that one, you're sure, everyone I've talked to
The only one I got was from the town, saying that it was gonna be five
No, they moved
Two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand.
May first was the date that they had
When anybody wants to give me two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand for my house, they'll go for it, 'cause I'll buy a house and get a town to leave for a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, put a hundred in my pocket, and pay less taxes.
And tell, they changed the sales tax revenue, Sherman, and the town is gonna make the break further than this Town of Western.
Well, you know what to do, right, sir?
Yeah, I talked to the assessor and then showed up grievance day. He never returns calls, I mean, he called me for a month and a half, where's he been?
A month and a half?
A month and a half, I got four phone calls
Can't answer for him, in that regard, then.
You know, and I have two emails, two emails, I sent him one at the beginning of the month and one just
I know several people he's called back, so that's strange.
Yeah.
Maybe he just doesn't wanna deal with you.
'Cause you got all your texts in your room?
Well, maybe he doesn't wanna deal with me, 'cause I'm probably an interesting person to deal with when I get this up.
That wouldn't be a good way to
No, I'm not saying I'm not saying physical, I'm saying legally.
That'll be the third grievance.
I think it's solved physical, everybody knows, same person knows
Maybe it was your third small-time squirt.
Yeah, exactly.
That is my
Yeah.
Unless you're vacant land, and that's gotta go to states or federal, right?
Yeah, unless you're a farmer.
Farmers and vacant land.
I know, I know two farmers personally, and they, I went over and looked at their, I was like, man.
Well, you want a place to sit at grievance day, get their
Alright, thank you gentlemen.
Is this the joint meeting? The email said it was a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Well, it was over.
Okay. Send you updated information, and Carl couldn't make it today, so we, they did the variance that they had in front of the last meeting, and
So I don't need to be here tonight? Makes up for some of the times you worked.
We're in a little bit too much now. You fill the rooms out.
That's it.
Yes, that's mine.
Are we good people?
Yeah.
Is that, there are more people that are
Well, when it's zone
Related, related
What was the name of the gentleman?
Who was, who was the, what's the guy's name, the contractor?
Petrowski.
Petrowski.
That's him, right there?
Yeah, that's John, yeah.
Have a great night, guys.
Non-conforming building, a non-conforming lot, without a primary structure, he had two other lots, they were gonna join them all together. We'll join them all together, and then
That's what, that's what we told them the last time.
I don't know that he was ever notified, was he? That's my only question, he told me.
Well
I believe that was decided on the last time, did that communicate?
Maybe he wasn't here, maybe it was, was it
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, he was not there.
Where was that?
So where's your tan?
I got it.
You got, you got oranges first? You got oranges first in the car?
Yeah, oranges, watermelons, we'll take one.
No!
Where are you going? We're not, we don't have anything to talk about.
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, we're all set.
The thing we need to do is the CBA, is
Scott's gotta show up tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna kick everybody out.